...nation and member God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy will have the roll call.
Mr. Moss, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Ricucci.
Here.
Mr. Denio.
Here.
Mr. Sevison. Mr. Gray.
Here. And Mr. Johnson, if we could hear from you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to update the commission on a couple of items that took place at the board hearing on Tuesday, the 26th. At that meeting, the board considered the appointment of a planning commissioner for the West Slope representation for the commission, and at that meeting, the board appointed Wayne Nader, who is here in our audience, to that position. We will be swearing Wayne in at the next meeting on April 11th, but he wanted to sit in and observe the commission today. Also, at the March 26th board meeting, the board heard the appeal of the Gold Hill Gardens project that was considered by your commission. As you may remember, after much deliberation, your board took, or your commission took action to deny the project, the proposed community center aspect of that project. That appeal was heard by the board. More than 30 persons spoke before the board, and on a split vote of three to two, the board took action to uphold the appeal and overturn your decision to deny it, and they did allow the project to be approved and move forward. In conjunction with the Gold Hill Gardens matter, the board did direct staff to come back with an interim ordinance that would create a moratorium for the processing of community center applications. The board, similar to the concerns that your commission has raised, wants staff to analyze the issue of community centers and private event centers and provide more definition and clarity on how best to review and analyze those projects when they come forward. And so that interim ordinance will be considered by the board at its April 9th meeting. The board also heard an update on the status... Yes?
Does that moratorium apply to all zones?
It would.
Okay.
It would apply to all zoning districts throughout the county.
Okay.
The board also heard an update on the status of West Placer projects. As the projects continue to move forward, the issues associated with the delivery of services and the construction of public facilities continues to be a very important issue to discuss. The board directed staff to continue working with the project applicants to find ways to allow those projects to move forward while providing the necessary public facilities that are required out in the West Placer area. And that concludes staff's comments. Staff is available to respond to any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks.
I would like to invite the public now for any comment they wish to make on any items not on the agenda today. Anyone? All right, see no one, we'll continue. Our first item, extension of time for Tyker staff. This will be... Lisa?
Good morning. Tyker is requesting approval of a one-year extension of time for their conditional use permit and variance associated with the previously approved Tyker aggregate facility in Lincoln, which is a surface and mining reclamation project. There's a picture of the project location. You can see it's southeast of Sheridan, north of Lincoln, and east of Old Highway 65. As part of the project, the applicants are required to provide reclamation of the site after mining, and these are included, some of the conservation easements, so that you can see what's going to be included. They're going to have 244 acres of ag land and areas for wetland creation. They've already created vernal pools out there, Coon Creek riparian habitat. There'll be two lakes at the end of the project, along with wildlife habitat and other areas. A little bit of the project background. February of 2003, the board certified the final EIR for this project, as well as the development agreement and the conditional use permit and variance. There was subsequent litigation that told the project for about four years. Then, 2008...
Before you go further, that litigation was concerning what? What was the grounds for the delay?
The litigation was from the... I'm going to let the applicant talk to that a little bit more specifically later, but in general, it was groundwater. The issues, or who brought the suit?
Issue.
WP Care.
Issue.
Issue.
Groundwater?
Groundwater, yeah. They created vernal pools and plum orchards, and you can see this is, for those of you who are not familiar, this is a created vernal pool here. This is the plum orchard in the background. In 2008, the planning commission did approve this project for a two-year time extension, which then extended the expiration date to 2010. And also, in 2008, the board of supervisors adopted an ordinance which extended all then valid use permits for two years. So it was extended again to 2012. And then, prior to that expiration date of this past December, Tyker came in for their last extension, which is a one-year extension. And by the zoning ordinance, they are allowed three years of an extension. Node modifications are proposed. With this proposal, only fiscal updates for inflation factors and updates to the conditions of approval for language clarifications are included. Both Sheridan and rural Lincoln Macs approved this extension of time unanimously. Here's another beautiful picture of the vernal pools out there that they've created. And Tyker is requesting this because of the economic slowdown, which has reduced their need for aggregate. They have been very diligent in pursuing the conditions of approval for this project, including they're about 85% through with their improvement plans. They, as you can see, they've put in a significant area of vernal pools. They've done view shed plantings. And because of this, and because of their, the allowance in the zoning ordinance for three years of extensions, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the addendum to the final EIR, excuse me, and approve the one-year extension for the conditional use permit and variance.
Any questions?
I have a question. What's, Lisa, where's the water going to come from for those two lakes? Is it groundwater, surface water? Do they know yet, or...? Well, they could answer it later on.
Yeah.
Okay, that's an open question, and whoever comes up there, if they can answer that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lisa, could you just kind of maybe briefly, or give us an overview of what the modifications for clarification were about?
Sure. If you'll... On the conditions of approval, the clarification, APCD wanted a little bit of clarifying language to show that, just make it a little bit more clear that when things would be required. Let me turn to their specifically. And... So, if you'll... So, 74 and 75, if you look at the language there, they just wanted to add the most current prices for payments into the APCD's air quality mitigation and add the language in, or whatever is current at the time that they apply. So that's just a fiscal update and the language clarification. And then on 75, they just wanted to make it clear that for both the construction and operational phases of the project, that that would be... And then the other portions, the 200 and 195, some of the condition numbers had changed, so I just wanted to clarify that so that it was cleaned up for the...
Okay. Mr. They're talking about off-site mitigation as being in lieu?
Uh-huh. For, on number 74?
Yeah, on 74.
Uh-huh.
So what types of things are we talking about there?
For off-site mitigation, they can, they can pay into a, generally, people would pay into in lieu. And so they could, it could have any sort of implication for whatever project was in the area that APCD thinks is a applicable project they can do. There might be some sort of dust, you know, dust control program that they have that, that would be countywide. There may be some sort of transportation item that comes up that they can use that money for. So that's at the purview of the APCD.
And it would be actually used for some physical air quality improvement project?
And sometimes there's educational programs for the community that they put that money towards. It's, like I say, it's at their purview, what they deem is necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, then, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. If anyone would like to make any comment concerning...
Applicant.
Applicant first.
Good morning. I'm Jesse Yang, on behalf of Tyker. I wanted to address some of the issues that were, that were raised regarding the topic of the litigation. It was actually about 20, it was a sequel litigation challenging the environmental document, and there were probably about 20 or 21 issues raised, and ultimately, the Court of Appeal found that all of them were adequately addressed in the EIR. And so it was a range of issues, everything from biological resources to water supply to air quality. So it was the whole spectrum, not just groundwater. That was just one of the 20-some issues, but the EIR was ultimately found to be adequate on all fronts. With regard to the lakes, those are generally filled with groundwater during the mining. There would be dewatering, but once the mining stops, the dewatering would stop, and then the groundwater would be allowed to rise in the lakes. And also, you know, it would be supplemented as needed with surface water from NID. I see there's a lot of people here that may wish to address this topic, so if we could have their right to respond to any other comments, that would be great.
All right.
And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions?
I know, but you have a question now?
No.
All right, Michael, yes. And now, if we'll have just a show of hands on how many people would like to comment. Okay, please come forward and state your name, if you would.
Jane Toddie, 4952 Gladding Road, better known as Ground Zero, but that's a private issue. Doesn't have anything to do with why I am here today, although why I keep paying attention. I'm here mainly because of the groundwater data, but I'd like to start by reminding county officials, just a little pollution splurge of my own here. I'd like to remind county officials that during the EIR process, Tyker acted to subvert California's Williamson Act law through special interest legislation in the form of Assembly Bill AB 1480. This bill would have given Tyker alone an exemption to Williamson Act law. This self-serving Assembly Bill was defeated, but if it had succeeded, the precedent would have been set for a drastic weakening of Williamson Act law, setting the stage and the precedent for self-interest legislation within Williamson Act law to be inserted. It would have, in fact, polluted the Williamson Act law, and that is pollution indeed. This may seem like dredging something out from the past, but my point is, Tyker knows how to take care of themselves. That's their business. Your business is to look towards the overall health of our community. A good business climate is part of that. But basic, basic part of that is you are looking out for the community, the health of the community. As to the current EIR, I challenge the data used in Tyker's dewatering plans. They would dewater the mining pits 18 hours a day for 42 years, day and night, 24 hours a day when needed, for 42 years. This is dewatering pits ranging from 40 feet deep to 150 feet deep. This aquifer is shared by Lincoln's groundwater wells. I'm 75 years old, and 15 years sounds really young to me, but not when it's a 15-year-old environmental impact report. That's not young. That's old. It is old, ladies and gentlemen, for one of the most environmentally destructive projects in our county's history. This EIR's mining plans are based on groundwater figures that are outdated and irrelevant, and to illustrate their irrelevance, please take notice of two current articles. In September, the United States Department of Agriculture designated Placer County as a natural disaster area due to drought. Our county, in September, natural disaster area due to drought. Furthermore, in February, the State Department of Water Resources declared the Northern Sierra Nevada Snowpack the lowest in recorded history. Is there anyone here that thinks that these drastic water issues have no impact on groundwater, on groundwater data that was collected close to 15 years ago? That's what we're talking about here. Old data, out-of-date data, irrelevant data. As I said before, the strip mine shares an aquifer with Lincoln's groundwater wells. As to horrific traffic issues, Lincoln is, would be impacted by 660 truck trips a day. Now, I know, in a little thing that came out, Tyker does reduce that to 550 or whatever, which I think is a little unfair, that they can go through the document and cherry-pick items that make them look better, but the rest of us are kept out of that process. At any rate, those trucks are going to inch their way up Wise Road, impact the new 65 bypass. God knows what it's going to do to the on-ramp on the Wise Road 65 bypass, but I guess we'll find out later. It will snarl traffic at the merge of Lincoln Boulevard and Highway 65, which is hard to get through at this moment without 660 trucks joining the freight. Lincoln drivers are going to be caught like rats in a barrel. All negative impacts of this project will impact Lincoln and Lincoln alone, which wasn't even invited to this first planning commission meeting. Air pollution, noise pollution, water pollution, traffic pollution, property value pollution. We are asking for an updated document. 15 years is a long time, and I wonder, is anyone here going home in a 15-year-old car? Is anyone using a 15-year-old computer or a 15-year-old phone? Do you take your children to a hospital with 15-year-old facilities? No, you do not, but that is what you're expecting the people in Lincoln to accept. That's what you're expecting us to accept. It's an out-of-date document that is supposed to protect us, but can't protect us because it's out of date. If we in Lincoln have to put up with all of these negative impacts, at least show us the respect of requiring a current, up-to-date environmental impact report on, on important, important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? And if you'd be so kind as to confine your comments to something that perhaps hasn't been covered yet?
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Spencer Short. I am the senior member of Lincoln City Council and the Public Utility Committee for the City of Lincoln, dealing with water issues. Lincoln's a member of the West Placer County Groundwater Partnership, which includes Lincoln, Roseville, PCWA, and several others. I come here today to speak on two specific issues, and recognizing that there have been a lot of changes in the ensuing years, we're not here to truly oppose the project, but there are some issues that I think need to be dealt with. Lincoln's worked with Tyker and Placer County since the early 1990s on this project when it was first envisioned. There were a number of discussions between 99 and about 2001 when this project was ultimately approved. To date, Tyker has frustrated the city's stated request, which was agreed to in principle by Tyker, to gather appropriate data to ensure that our shared aquifer is not damaged by the proposed activity. We have asked for better data, more data, on seismic testing, on monitoring wells, and Tyker actually agreed. I have a letter from 2000, which indicates Tyker's willingness to engage in these processes. What this would do to us, potentially, it would harm the 43,350 residents of Lincoln, because we rely on our groundwater wells to provide about 10% of our annual usage. It would provide harm to our neighbors in the unincorporated Placer County. It would potentially harm agritourism, which is becoming a major issue, as you heard from your planning director earlier, and would also harm West Placer County economic development, potentially. Again, January 7th of 2000, Tyker agreed to provide two monitoring wells for exploration, approximately $80,000 to the City of Lincoln. One or more transducers in their existing wells at about $5,000, and $20,000 of additional modeling for groundwater. This is a critical item. The Dode and Coon Creek ravine areas along which this project lies are apparently key recharge areas for groundwater throughout Placer County. And so, in our work with West Placer County Group, we would like to get this data. We've been trying to get this data since 2000, 2001. However, the cost to do this, Tyker would put up about $100,000. Our cost to do the necessary valuation, and these are all in 1999, $2,000. That was about $253,000. The costs have increased now, and we have not been able to utilize a number of things through Regional Water Authority. The City of Roseville, on behalf of West Placer Group, has received almost $400,000 to conduct monitoring and exploration of groundwater. Due to Tyker's intransigence on this issue, we have not been allowed access, as was agreed to by Tyker years and years ago, when we were first discussing this. In January of 2004, after approval of the project, there's a Gash Associates letter, which I'll provide to your clerk, in fact, there will be a whole package of information I'll provide to your clerk, that denied access to the city's consultants for seismic data acquisition. It was simply a decision to change their mind. We're asking that you enforce conditions and enforce agreements, and help us get this data, because this was all part of our understanding. And I also want to point out, we were not party to litigation, because we felt we were working together in the spirit of good faith and cooperation. Second issue I want to hit really briefly, traffic conditions. Back in 2000, 2001, there was a lot of discussion about traffic, because it was expected to go down the old Highway 65 alignment through Lincoln, and our mayor at the time suggested a bucket truck for these trips. That probably is not appropriate any longer. However, it is appropriate to take a look at the impacts on Highway 65 bypass. And I want to thank Jane Toddie for mentioning the West Wise and 65 bypass on-ramp. There is no on-ramp. That's actually contemplated in future planning, but it's not there now. West Wise is very rough, and I want to point out a policy of the county traditionally, which has been to leave roads that are going to be annexed into a city in their current state. Currently, the city has taken, taken control of more road for repair. We've done repairs on Nelson Lane, and this is all being left to the city, because these roads are in very bad repair. If those trucks are going to use West Wise Road, West Wise Road needs to be rebuilt, and that's a major issue, because that was not contemplated. Additionally, sending trucks from the proposed site across the old 65 going westbound is not so much of a problem. Coming eastbound off of Highway 65, across the old Highway 65 at West Wise Road, could create some significant issues. I speak to this from experience, because we have a couple of intersections in Lincoln that are very short for our ranch road for existent, or, for example, which would not allow through trips from a large truck. They have to stop behind the railroad crossing, which then they have to cross the railroad crossing and cross the highway very quickly. So what we would suggest is that it might be appropriate, now that we have SPARDA, South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, for this project to contribute to that, rather than some of the other mitigations. And some of the mitigations, frankly, are out of date. That's not really a, it's not a knock on the county, it's not a knock on this commission, because, again, this has been over a decade, and things change, and we're okay with that. We would also suggest possibly updating the traffic model, just to make sure that there's no harm that comes to existing residents in the area. So in closing, you know, we are just concerned about collecting groundwater data to make sure that this facility does not harm the greater Placer County area. Our, our aquifer is tied together substantially. So we'd ask for these, a guarantee of access, asking the county to help us enforce that guarantee of access onto the property to gather this data near Coon Creek and Dode Ravine, that there would be some sort of action against the permit if it's not allowed. Changing of minds is not an acceptable reason to violate an agreement. That we would ask that Tyker financially support this process entirely. Because of their actions, West Placer County Groundwater Partnership has been unable to use the $400,000 that we've gotten in grants through Regional Water Authority to conduct these investigations. They would have been conducted at no cost, or potentially minimal cost, to Tyker, but now we're stuck trying to come to you as arbiters of good faith. And finally, we would ask about, we ask the commission, take a look at the, the issue of whether or not signalizing the intersection of the old 65 and why, West Wise Road would be appropriate as a mitigation measure, because that would ensure that trucks could easily get through that intersection, and also for the rebuilding of West Wise Road. We, the City of Lincoln is not in a position to repair that, that road, even under its current conditions, much less after 600 truck trips a day, roughly. We'll be going across that, that road deteriorating, which we believe has no base. There is no road base at all, because these roads were eyeballed at the time. So I thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions for me, please let me know.
Yes, I do, too. Go ahead.
Richard on the right.
Okay. Mr. I guess it sounds like yours is conditioned in the original conditions that you say that there was, they just changed their mind on, and I guess I'm a little puzzled by that, which condition you're talking about, and to do with monitoring, is that right?
Yeah, and I apologize, because I heard of the hearing late, and so I can provide these letters indicating the agreements between Tyker and Lincoln to make these things happen.
Was this an agreement?
Agreement? I believe there was also a condition of approval in George. Do you have the condition?
I guess what my question is, is there a condition in the use permit?
Well, it was.
It was?
Yes. And I can get that back to you and write.
Was or is? That was my question. Go ahead, Ken. Yeah, is it, or it was or is a condition? Well, he said it was, I think.
Okay.
We'll have to find out which one it was.
Yeah. And then, I had a, just a quick question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How, how deep are Lincoln's wells? Their, your municipal wells?
That's a great question. If I could call up one of our consultants, Frank? Frank Bradham's our city's water consultant. He's worked on our well system since 1988.
We're talking about the city's wells in general? Groundwater level's somewhere between 50 and 60 feet below the surface, and the wells range between, the depth ranges between 250 and 450 feet.
Okay. That was just my question. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any other questions, I'll present this to your clerk.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask staff a question. Did they, were you able to find that, was that in the original conditions or not?
You know, I think we're looking at, looking for that information right now. We haven't found it at this point. So we'll continue to look and see what we can find.
I thought you had it. I'm sorry.
Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Therese Adams. I live at 340 Fleming Road, which is in the vicinity of the, of the strip mine that is currently, the applicant seeking an extension. My comments are directed, of course, to you, the Commissioners, county staff, members of the public, the applicant. First of all, I would like to make an observation, and that the only thing that really appears not to have changed in the last 15 years is county staff's enthusiasm for this project. If you look at pure economics, the area around the strip mine is going to have all the impacts, which is rural Lincoln and the City of Lincoln. Who's going to benefit? The county. Because the, part of the agreement, a certain fees will go to the county's treasury, not to the people that are being impacted. So there's a disconnect there that I find very troubling. I'd also like to mention also, there was a question about litigation. I was involved from the beginning as a member of WP Care, which was an all-volunteer citizens group that brought the litigation against the county for approving the strip mine. I think this board and county staff that may not have been involved in this should know that we won at the trial level. We won. So a judge heard the testimony, read the record, and, and came down with a decision in favor of the citizens, okay? That decision was reversed on appeal. I recommend you read this. Okay? The other thing that I think that is important is that the applicant has made it very clear that if they don't get the extension, they'll just start mining. So I don't think that it's really necessary for me to go over all of the points of the litigation, because that's already been discussed and decided. And I think though, however, it is important because you can just go on NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Site, and look at the data for rainfall, for water. Yes, drought, we live, California is a desert. But for the absolutely wonders of human engineering that brought water to the Central Valley and made this such a rich, wonderful agricultural area, we'd still be a desert. And the climate forecasts are not very encouraging. So what is our most valuable resource today? It's water. And so, I think that it's really important that you as a board think of another strategy, and that's what I'm proposing. I would like this board to recommend to county council to research that this permit be terminated based on a theory in the law called change in circumstances. And a very appropriate analogy and example would be a commercial developer is given a permit to build a high-rise in the middle of the city, or wherever. And as they're doing the excavation, they come across a significant archaeological find. What happens? Bang. Immediately, the work stops, and perhaps even the project stops, based on the significance of that find. So when there are change circumstances, there is precedent in the law to, to make a difference, to change. So I really think it's important that this board gives serious consideration to directing county council to look at the options to stop this devastating environmental impact in our county. It is actually the largest proposed mining project in Northern California. So I think that's really important. Now, I don't know, maybe the applicant can tell me if those buildings in the in the background there is Alpha Explosives. What I haven't heard is perchlorate. Alpha for years dumped perchlorate into the groundwater, contiguous to this site. It's currently undergoing cleanup. But these are the things, how can we be sure all of these things are going to be looked after for the people that live in that community? So I want to conclude my, and you can see I kept them brief, my comments with an appeal to this board to direct county council to look at the possibility of whatever it may be necessary to require either a new AIR or a complete revocation of this permit based on change circumstances which have occurred over the last 15 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? One more.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. My name is George Delwo. I'm the Assistant Director of Development Services for the City of Lincoln, 606th Street, Lincoln, California. I don't want to repeat some of the things that have been mentioned earlier, but one of the things that came out repeatedly was that the environmental impact report that this addendum is relying on is over 15 years old. And many things have happened in those 15 years. For one, if you look at the California Department of Water Resources website, we've had two multi-year droughts. One occurred between 2000 and 2002, and the second one occurred between 2007 and 2009. Since that time too, SEQA law has changed. It now requires projects to review their impact relative to climate change and greenhouse gases. I haven't had a chance to review the environmental impact report, but I don't know whether that was ever addressed in the current document. When you, when you rely on an EIR to do an addendum, you pretty much have to make a finding that everything that was covered in that environmental impact report is still relevant. We believe that the greenhouse gas and climate change has not been adequately addressed. Several issues were brought up earlier regarding groundwater. The city submitted a letter in 1999, and if you review the rebuttals to the city letter, most of those comments were dismissed, and I'd like to resubmit that letter after I'm done here. As Councilmember Short mentioned, we believe that there still is some additional information that's required to adequately characterize the aquifer relative to dewatering, the city's groundwater supply, and contamination that was mentioned earlier. One of the things that you're reviewing this morning is a conditional use permit. You are required to make a finding that this particular project will not be injurious or detrimental to the people living and residing and working in the vicinity. I urge you to take a second thought, to think about that, and see whether that addendum is providing adequate information for you to make that finding. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more public comment, then we'll.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Please come forward, Mr. Ken.
Hello, Jesse Yang again, on behalf of Tykert. Just wanted to respond briefly to some of the issues that were raised. Regarding the, the allegations that the EIR is 15 years old, it's actually was certified 10 years ago in 2003. And all of the issues that were raised by the commenters were addressed in the EIR, and that EIR was determined to be adequate after four years of litigation by the Court of Appeal. And as far as change circumstances, as far as I can tell, all of the environmental conditions have either not changed or have improved since 2003. The bypass, which was looked at in the EIR, both assuming that it was in place and that it was not in place, so the EIR addressed both scenarios in the cumulative analysis. But now the bypass is in place. We've, the growth rates have gone down considerably since the cumulative growth rates that were assumed in the cumulative analysis for traffic, air quality, noise in the EIR. Alpha Explosives has begun remediation of their groundwater with, through the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They started that in 2006, and it's been successful. And regarding the comments from the City of Lincoln, we're not aware of any agreements with the City of Lincoln. There are conditions of approval that require that we implement a groundwater monitoring program, but those conditions are triggered by the commencement of mining, which we haven't started yet. So as far as any obligation to construct any wells, I'm not aware of anything. But we'd be happy to sit down with the City of Lincoln. You know, this was the first time we'd ever heard anything about this issue. So we'd be happy to sit down with the city to discuss these issues. If you have any other questions, oh, one more other issue regarding Wise Road. There isn't a, a provision in the development agreement that requires part of the cents per ton that goes to transportation improvements to go to Wise Road.
Yeah, Mr. Yang, you have a question, maybe. Do you see, it looks like you have a, a signal on Nader Road that you're going to pay for? And that's your main haul route out of?
Yes.
Site? And then Wise Road?
My understanding is the signalization, you know, it would have to meet, well, at the time the project was approved, I believe, you know, at that time it was State Route 65, so it was under Caltrans jurisdiction. But I believe there was a signalized intersection there. I'm not sure if it was signalized. I know that there were improvements that were required.
Yeah, I think I'm reading here, just read it real quick, but it looked like there was a signal at Nader Road, but as far as Wise Road, is there any work that's planned on that intersection?
I, I would imagine that's all part of the, the cumulative traffic mitigation.
Okay, so maybe we can ask later what?
Yeah. It's more of a, it's more of a pay fees and it goes into the cumulative pool for future projects. But I, again, I'm just speaking off the top of my head.
Any question concerning these monitoring wells, if you will? As far as your knowledge goes, you're not required to do any of this until you begin mining?
That is my understanding. That's how the condition reads.
But, but you're saying that you don't know anything about an agreement, a written agreement between your Tykert and the City of Lincoln?
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. You've got two different opinions on that one.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, we were not able to find any requirement relating to the agreement. We do, we have found, however, that they are supposed to monitor some wells, and like Mr. Yang indicated, that's upon commencement. And then, on an annual basis, they're supposed to share that monitoring information with Placer County. And when that is done, we make that available to any.
So they don't, they don't monitor before they start mining to get a base level before they do any further tests?
I'll have to look into that. I don't see that at this point.
There's actually about 23 monitoring wells out there that they've done.
Already?
Already.
And that?
In that area for, to, to get a baseline.
And that information's available?
Yeah, that's all in the EIR also. And it also covers two very significant drought cycles, both the 76, 77, I believe, which was the worst drought year on record, and also late 80s, early 90s, which was about six years of, of below-average years in a row. And that, that information is all in the EIR.
Any other questions?
Just for staff, I think is the point for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I guess maybe from an engineering perspective, but we're hearing a lot of concerns about the road system out there, and of course, one of the concerns is apparently the City of Lincoln is responsible for Wise Road, which I guess we need to have a assessment of, as well as where signalization is planned, and what other road improvements are associated with this project. It be, you know, money or actual physical changes.
Yes, I can give you an overview. If we get into any detailed stuff, I'll defer to Andrew Gaber of DPW. But if you turn in your conditions to the road section, which starts with condition of approval 11, you'll see that most of the conditions are related to the Nader Road 65 intersection. That's where most of the physical improvements are. In both the DA and in further conditions on the next page, there's a number of traffic mitigation fair share fees, so it's not actual physical improvements. It's money contributions, and this includes an acceleration lane on Highway 65. This includes fair share of a signal at 65 and Gladding. There is in condition 20, a million dollars towards improvements to Wise Road.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers your question.
And those will be done by the county at work?
Yeah, these all go into the CIP, which, I'm sorry, the traffic fees go into the CIP. These all go specifically to the county into little coffers for these improvements, when the full amount is available, or when the county deems it necessary.
Okay. Are we going to have more comments, I guess?
Well, we'll have.
There's one issue.
One more, and then we'll close it off.
Well, yeah, we're. No, I'm just asking questions of the staff.
Okay. Andrew Gaber with Public Works Transportation. In the development agreement, it calls out several different funding sources that will collect from Tykert as they go through. One of them is five cents per ton aggregate material that they produce. That money gets spent basically west of 65, so we have a lot of latitude as to what improvements we can utilize that for. There is, as Sarah said, the, the million dollars that goes towards Wise Road improvements. It calls for money to be given, or spent towards Highway 65 funding. And again, it's general as to what the first priority of these funds is for the construction of Highway 65 bypass. If, however, the board of the county determines that there are sufficient funds for the bypass, these funds are going to be used for transportation improvements anywhere within the unincorporated area in that region. So they'll be paying us quite a bit of money that we could utilize as we see fit for the specific improvements. You know, we've talked about this, you know, internally upstairs, and it's, you know, we're aware of some of Lincoln's concerns, and we've also, you know, they're, they're getting money for some improvements down towards Lincoln. We would see that some of these funds could possibly be used for some of the roadwork on Nelson. Again, once they start mining, we then start collecting the money, we could then say, okay, how are we going to spend the funds?
I see there was a comment that the City of Lincoln would be responsible for any work on Wise Road. Is that correct?
We would collect the funds. And again, it's up to us as to where that money goes. There's specific money that goes to Tykert agrees to pay county a million dollars for the purposes of improving Wise Road between Highway 65 and Highway 65 bypass. Okay.
So that's delineated directly, and the other one's at our discretion?
Correct.
I guess I'm still, I'm still a bit puzzled, because I'm assuming it's when the, in the City of Lincoln's sphere of influence, are they responsible for roadwork in that area?
If it's in their city limits, yes. It would not be the first time that we would have not passed on funds to help another agency construct improvements.
But if Wise Road is outside of the city limits?
Then it's our.
Would be our responsibility?
Would be our responsibility.
But is any of this, is this, any of this money going directly to the City of Lincoln automatically? Or is it just on the goodwill of Placer County? Here's a little trust issue, I think, here. I mean, that's what I heard from, from Mr. Short.
You'll have to forgive me, it's been a while since I've looked at this, but.
I didn't see it in there.
I can tell you that in the conditions anyway, the only agreement that would go directly to the City of Lincoln has to do with signage. In condition 20, there's a fairly lengthy condition that says, if city or county monitor truck traffic and find that there's a a situation less than ideal for pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera, that et cetera, that both City of Lincoln and the Plaster County DPW can require Tyker to fund signage that prohibits such truck traffic wherever there is deemed an official problem. That's the only place in the conditions I see.
Well, and in the DA, cents per ton funding for county projects, one of the sentences reads, "County agrees to provide four cents per ton to the City of Lincoln for roadway improvements and maintenance for a period beginning with the commencement of mining."
Where are you reading?
This is in a development agreement, section 3.3.3.5.
I assume we have it in here somewhere. I'll find it. I don't know if we have DA and...
Perhaps I can add some clarification here. When the, the project came through originally, there was a request and in fact, a development agreement was adopted by the Board of Supervisors as, and is in full force and effect, very typical of the larger projects, projects that take quite a bit of time to go through. The commission may recall, Plaster Vineyards, for example, had a development agreement. The development agreement allows the parties to outline both conditions, mitigations, or other agreements that have been struck with the developer for things such as roadway improvements, which is what Andrew's referring to. And I apologize, this wasn't included with your packet because there is no proposed change to this development agreement, so therefore it was not directly relevant to the commission's decision on extension of the use permit. But as these issues have come up, they are contained within the development agreement.
Does that development agreement contain the items that the gentleman from Loomis was referring to?
I couldn't hear you.
Was the development agreement have the items that the gentleman from Lincoln was referring to, as far as the agreements for monitoring wells, et cetera?
Oh, now, now that appears, now let me clarify. The development agreement is an agreement between the developer and the county. These agreements that have been referred to at the City of Lincoln, from what I understand, if, if they even existed, were, were agreements between the city and the developer. It did not involve the county. And it is not, those agreements are not contained within this development agreement. I also haven't found a condition that would require any kind of agreement with the City of Lincoln related to access or monitoring. And in fact, the county would, would rarely if ever include something to require an agreement that is separate apart from the county's regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, for me, I was wondering if it'd be okay if we asked the city councilman from Lincoln, if he, I see he had his hand up, I'd like to see if you could come forward and maybe see if we're missing something?
Sure.
To clarify, you would have to reopen the public hearing. You have to close the public...
I haven't closed it personally.
Well, you did.
No, I can get it and say close.
Okay.
In any event, it's open.
It's open now, come on.
Just a clarification on what the gentleman from Public Works was saying. The traffic issue, if you look back, we have a past practice of the county, which is to not improve those roads coming into Lincoln. Or into, I believe probably any city, but I like to speak to Lincoln at this point. Moore Road, Nelson Road, Nicholas Road have all been in the same situation. We are putting up the money to improve Nelson because eventually it will come into the city, but at this time, it's in such poor shape. And that's from minor truck traffic. We're not talking major truck traffic on that road. And there were, you know, I believe the county staff is correct, because I mean, it's been a long time since we've touched this, but there were private agreements on Lincoln not challenging the EIR. And, you know, this is really, I view it as a situation of bad faith because we had agreements, those agreements were just forgotten once the project was approved. And by extending this, it potentially extends the harm that we would face.
Let me ask you a question.
Let me ask you a question.
Well, let me just... Well, no. Are agreements, are these agreements verbal or were they written?
We have writ, we have written documents that state what Tyker's going to do for us. So, and that's actually what I provided to your secretary earlier.
Well, one, one quick question.
Yeah.
You're talking county, now you're saying agreements directly with Tyker. Our jurisdiction is just from the county with what we have with Tyker. Now, I understand, if I heard correctly from the county, that you are getting a reimbursement from Tyker. Is there a four cent? Did I hear right?
The four cent per ton.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I believe is a bucket truck.
Yeah, goes, goes back to...
Yeah, and, and we had actually asked to be a party to the development agreement way back when, and we were basically told the same thing, your county council said that it would be very inappropriate, unlikely. And so we actually tried to get this data. We've been, again, we've been trying in good faith, and, and the gentleman from Tyker, who said that, that he doesn't know anything, we've been trying through 2009, 10 to get access. So I mean, access is really all we're looking for, if we can...
Okay, and then I guess my second question on that, because you keep talking about responsibility of the road that you take it over. When are you looking at annexing or taking over? Is it a year?
Fifteen, 20, 50 years.
A year, 50 years?
Yeah.
I mean, you have it annexed, it's just...
No, it's, it's within the county, it's...
It's your sphere.
Well, it's within the city's general plan. It's a planned area, but we have not annexed it. You are correct.
Okay, so, in other words, if we're asking for a year and they start next year sometime?
Yeah.
Then chances are the improvements start going in at that time. I, I think if you're talking, you know, 20, 30 years...
We'd hope, but we don't know what, what tomorrow holds. I mean, we have to assume the worst...
I understand that. All I'm saying is, is we're working on a, you know...
County level.
On a county level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we appreciate that. We just want to make sure that we're not stuck with the short end of the stick here.
Is there any other questions?
I think that answers it. It sounds like you have a chance to resolve these issues at this point in time, just by your presentation here and, and what you've heard in the room and the people that are talking to you, so it's okay with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will close the public. So that we're... And bring it back to, are there any questions for staff? So, are there any questions for staff at this point?
You did miss, did you, did you miss the, the person who wanted to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, did it, was he already?
Yeah, well, you don't have to, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Can I reopen? Last comment?
Yes.
Reopen for public comment, last comment.
Since there was a follow-up by Tyker, it seemed, didn't seem inappropriate to ask for one. First of all, in saying that the project is only 10 years old, that would assume that all the information, all of the science, all of everything that Tyker did happened 10 years ago when it was approved. Not true, of course. The information was gathered over years and years and years. So maybe it was approved 10 years ago, but the information is much, much older, closer 15 years. Also, when you talk about money per ton going to roads, that shows me trucks leaving Tyker, selling aggregate, without any improvements to the roads yet. I mean, if the money for improvement is going to come from selling aggregate, the trucks are going, going to be going down the roads before the improvements. How did, how do they get the money if they don't leave the plant? So I think the improvements on the roads need to be tied in, legally tied in, before all these trucks start leaving the plant. We can't pay for it out of so many cents per ton without the road, without the trucks being on the roads and impacting the roads and traffic.
Actually, I'd just like to respond in 17, or actually 18 of their conditions, it looks like they're going to be making over a million dollar payment that has to commence upon mining.
Upon mining.
Upon mining, not, not after they sell the aggregate, upon improvements and/or when 65 bypass commences, or six years effective date from the, their conditional use permit.
So you were saying that they will buy the check to Lincoln or whom?
No, they, they go into the county improvements.
Into county improvements?
And the county does it. Lincoln doesn't have control of the approach.
You don't care, you don't, you're not dealing with Lincoln.
No.
Okay.
We're, we're county, we don't...
You're not dealing with Lincoln and I understand that protocol. However, Lincoln's back there getting all of the negative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will once again close public comment. We'll record staff.
Just one suggestion, you may want to ask Tyker if they have any final comments.
Mr. Chung?
Can you say final comments?
Final comments?
How many from, uh, the board?
Tiger.
Tiger.
Any final comments for Tiger? No, thank you. In that case, we'll bring it back here for discussion.
Well, not so much discussion, I'd like to ask anybody on staff, mention this development agreement, which I understand what development agreements are. They're above and beyond the IR and everything else, but is, has any conditions changed? Or since this project was approved, that, that development agreement should have been changed in parts? Just, I know that's just kind of an open-ended question, but since I don't have it in front of me, I can't really tell.
I guess I'm going to ask you to clarify what you mean by change of circumstance. With the development agreement, after it has been adopted by the board and is in full force and effect, there, the only time it would be revised is if one of the parties requested and in fact, applied for revision to the development agreement. Not uncommon to happen, but it would be a separate application process. We would look at it separately, we would look at it from the standpoint of CEQA as well, because it would be discretionary. In this instance, the only request was an extension of the term of the use permit. None of the provisions of the development agreement are proposed to be revised by the applicant, nor did staff in reviewing the conditions find any change that would necessitate any revisions to that development agreement. I, I hope that answers your question.
No, I think that, I think that did, thank you.
Okay. Anything? Well, does anyone like to make a motion?
Yes. Since we've gone through all this, I, I guess I'll, I'll move that we adopt the addendum to the certified final environmental impact and improve a one-year extension of the time for Tyker with the CEQA findings attached and all the attached documentation that we, we have today.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Shall we, Paul?
Just as, for clarification, the recommendation would include the conditional use permit and variance, and like you indicated, subject to the CEQA findings, the use permit, use permit and variance findings, that are in the staff report.
That's in the motion.
Yeah.
You know, I guess I'd kind of like to just make the comment that I understand that this, when it was being developed, is a very controversial project and many people's minds still is, but at least, you know, I think we did a pretty thorough job at trying to dig into the issues that were brought up and at least, you know, my second means I didn't really see any significant, specific issues that would cause us to take another look at the EIR, so that's why my vote is going to be where it's at.
Okay, well, just call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to read the appeal rights.
Should this decision wish to be appealed by anybody? The fee is $520, or excuse me, it's been changed to $529, and an appeal must be made within 10 calendar days to a fine department. Anything else? All right. Thank you. A little late, so we'll take a quick five-minute break and then we'll listen to Squadelli. A little late, so we'll take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll listen to Squaw Valley. All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order. And in the, what we're going to try to do is move to the eleven o'clock agenda item. And Mr. Thompson will have a comment concerning that, just a second. Lisa, we'll be right back to you.
In Mr. Thompson's absence, I'll step in. Staff is recommending that the eleven o'clock timed item be continued to April 11th. Unfortunately, it was brought to staff's attention that the item was not properly noticed in accordance with county code. And based upon discussions with county council, it was advised that the item be continued to April 11th to assure for proper notification of the item.
Do we need to have a vote on that continuance?
And, and, and while we realize there are representatives and people in the audience who would like to speak on this item, it would be staff's recommendation to your commission that we not bifurcate the hearing and that you continue it in totality and not accept any public comments today.
Okay, thank you.
But let me ask, comment on that last comment. And Michael, isn't required that if it's been published and on the agenda, that people that come need to have the right to speak? I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of having it all at one time. I'm just asking a legal question.
No. No, it is not. This was brought to staff's attention yesterday. As you know, if we know about this further in advance, about a request for continuance, we do make all efforts to place it on the agenda before it's published. But in this instance, it was afterwards. This is an appeal. It is a de novo hearing. It is my recommendation that tests may not be taken. Failure to notice raises due process issues. We think it is simple prudent to continue the whole matter.
That's true. That's an obligation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll accept the.
I make the motion that we continue the eleven o'clock item, which is April 19th. The Elon Grand Residential Care Home to April 11th.
Do we have a specific time yet? No. No, okay. All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but law's pretty clear on something like this. It would be unfair to other people. So we'll now turn to Mr. Ryan. So for the 1020 item, the conditional use permit for Squaw Valley Red Dog Lift Replacement, we'll hear from staff, and DC, you're back up and on.
Up again. Hello again. Yes, this is the conditional use permit for the Squaw Valley Red Dog Chair Lift Replacement. So just a quick vicinity map showing Truckee, Lake Tahoe, and Squaw Valley. Site map showing the areas of, that would be encompassed by this. The current lower lift terminal is approximately at the intersection here. It comes up, just skims this and comes on up. Here's a, just a quick picture. Here's the existing lift going up the mountain. And the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to remove the existing chair lift, which is a triple chair lift, and replace it with a new high-speed detachable six-place chair lift. The new chair lift would be on the same alignment with the existing chair lift. However, these, there's sixteen existing towers. They would be replaced with eighteen new towers. Same, same alignment. They would need to widen this area a little bit to accommodate the, the new towers. This slide shows the existing lower terminal, which would be replaced with a new terminal. And here's the existing upper terminal, which would also be replaced. The project as proposed does comply with the Squaw Valley General Plan and Land Use Ordinance, and the Squaw Valley MAC unanimously recommended approval of this project at their October meeting. I did include with the staff report and errata to the mitigated NAGDEC inadvertently. This parcel here was not included with the original A P Ns. The project as proposed may just clip the end of this parcel. So I added that into the errata. And also the change in land districts, the, some of them were, there's a, right here, there's heavy commercial. This little, the rest of it is forest recreation, and that was not included with that. But all of the impacts to all of the land in the surrounding area that would be encompassed were analyzed within the mitigated NAGDEC.
And they're all in the same ownership?
I'm sorry?
They're all in the same ownership?
Yes. And with that, staff recommends that you adopt the mitigated NAGDEC in the errata and adopt the mitigation monitoring plan and approve the conditional use permit for this project. And I can answer any questions you might have.
I do have just maybe a clarifying question. And on the, in the staff report, there's a reference to eight older chair lifts and a plan, a capital plan, and some hourly skiers. And this particular lift is going to increase the number of skiers, but the aggregate, when certain lifts are removed, or maybe they have been removed, is going to reduce the hourly.
Correct, with the 2012 Capitals project. So the overall would still be a reduction in the number of.
But this project is just considering this particular lift and the removal, or maybe other lifts have been removed. I don't know. I couldn't tell. Or maybe they're going to be removed, and so the impacts that are being addressed here are just for this lift?
Correct.
Not the aggregate of all the lifts?
Correct.
So have those lifts already been removed, or what's the situation?
I'll let the applicant say which ones have and which ones have not. That was the capital projects for 2012, and yes, there was a number of ones that were going to be removed and replaced. I believe eight that were going to be replaced with three more up-to-date newer chair lifts.
Okay, so, you know, this.
The only reason that information was included was because this chair lift is going to increase capacity for this chair lift, but we, it was wanting to be noticed that overall, there's still a decrease in the amount of people that, that can be per hour in the capacity.
Okay, well, this, this particular report goes, yeah, I understand that, but this particular report goes into pretty extensive discussion of the impacts of the removal and the, as well as the building of the new lift. And the impacts of the other lifts that are being removed, is that covered in the document? Are we even concerned about that?
That, that was covered with the 2012 project that was already approved. That was, that's a done project, and those impacts were already reviewed within that project.
Okay.
As an approval.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I might also note that your commission did review and consider that project. It was, it was a previous conditional use permit that was approved by your commission.
Okay. Yeah, that's probably one of the meetings I missed, so I appreciate that.
Now I wasn't here, so. Lisa, I have a, I have a question. A conditional use permit, is it because the capacity is being increased on this particular lift, or does everything in Squaw Valley need a use permit? And when they're making any kind of a change?
When they're doing the, the chair lifts, they all require a use permit.
And is it chair lifts unique, or is it just, that's part of the development agreement or development of the?
It's just part of the Squaw Valley plan. The general plan is that if they're redoing a chair lift or putting in a new chair lift or anything having to do with the chair lifts, they have to go through the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
All right. In that case, we'll hear from applicant.
Good morning. Thank you. Mike Levak here on behalf of Squaw Valley Resort. The purpose of this project is to improve particularly intermediate skiing and to hasten the access of intermediates to the top of our Red Dog Mountain. This is really nice groomed terrain, and it leaves right out of the base area. We have found that our skiers have less tolerance for long lift rides and are expecting to be able to make use of the detachable technology. The modest increase in capacity that will be afforded by this project, as noted before, with the chairs we've already taken out, we're diminishing the overall on-hill lift capacity. However, substituting this high-speed detachable lift for the existing fixed-grip lift will increase its capacity a little bit, and that will help us particularly on storm and weather days when the ski area is compressed in operation to only the lower mountain lifts. Those days are particularly challenging for us right now, because we have the number of skiers show up very anxious to ski new snow oftentimes, and we're operating only a portion of the ski area because some of our upper mountain lifts are very susceptible to wind. So we think that this will be a very productive improvement for our skiing and snowboarding guests. And will result in very minimal environmental impact. And with that, we'll be open to any questions you might have.
Yeah, just one question. How old is the, the existing lifts?
The existing.
I'm not a skier, but that's why I have to ask this question.
Sure. Our lift network was installed in stages over time. I think that our oldest lifts presently on site probably still date back to the late 50s. We're upgrading as we move through based on priority. This particular lift was completed in the year of 1990.
I would think it'd be a safety issue with new technology, and like I said, those detachable things and what have you, and the new, the new towers and what have you. It seems like it would be a safety issue too, and improve safety for the skiers, I would think, just off.
Actually, we, we maintain our lifts in accord with manufacturer specifications, and we're also regulated quite closely by the California State Division of tramways, which requires testing and very particular maintenance steps and certification of each of our lifts on a yearly basis. So we're confident that all of our lifts, irrespective of their date of origin, are equally safe.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that you were running any unsafe lifts. I was just. I was just thinking that they would be safer to use mainly, because I know that, I guess, sometimes the skiers do fall off of these things and what have you, which is a tragic. But I'm just, just, I'm not a skier, like I said, but it seemed like it would be a safety improvement. Although the, the old ones would probably, obviously have to be safe, so.
I think that anytime we replace an older technology with a newer lift, one of the things that we diminish is the likelihood of mechanical failure. So it would be less likely with, with a new chair lift design and technology to have a lift go down and to need to evacuate that lift. Otherwise, I believe that the lifts are all equally safe. This lift, like all the lifts at Squaw Valley, will be equipped with what is known as a comfort bar or a bar that the rider can draw down once they've loaded the chair and can swing back up out of the way in order to disembark the chair.
Okay, thank you for that information.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll close it, bring it back for discussion. Anything guys? Seems pretty straightforward. I'll ask for any motions.
Well, I guess that I would make a motion that we adopt the negative declaration in errata as set forth in attachment D and adopt the mitigation monitoring plan included in, as attachment E and approve the conditional use permit to allow the removal of the existing Red Dog fixed-grip triple chair lift and to allow the installation of a high-speed detachable six-place chair lift at the same location, subject to the following findings and attached recommended, recommended conditions of approval and all the CEQA findings.
Motion second. Call for a vote?
All in favor? Aye.
Do you want to draw these, these, these plans? Would it be abuse to you, plans that came with the Red Dog plan?
Michael, would you like this?
You want your plans, you want your plans back?
All right, well, moving right along to our 1030 agenda item, subdivision map modification and variance.
Good morning. My name is Alan Bruch. I'm the staff planner for this particular project. Oh, you, I'm sorry, Mickey.
You just something on there. All right, Alan, please continue.
Okay. Alan Bruch from up in the Tahoe office. I'm the staff planner for this particular project. The project is in Alpine Meadows. It's a proposed map modification. This particular subdivision has a 20-foot map setback. So the applicant is coming in today to modify that. I do have the applicant here. His name is Don Falda. He's from Ward Young Architecture. So if there's any questions, he's here to answer that for the applicant's perspective. To get everyone oriented where the location is, as I mentioned, it's in Alpine. Here's Alpine Meadows Road. This is the subdivision that was created in the early 1970s with a 20-foot map setback. The project site is this site here, and they are proposing to have a entryway to come into a new single-family home that's going to be developed there. They're going to demo the old one. The setback is going to be five feet for that entryway into the house, and then there is about a two-and-a-half-foot setback to the eve proposal. The zoning around the site is single-family residential. This is the existing conditions, that with the existing house, staff reviewed the application and determined that there were special circumstances for the modification. There's approximately about a 40% slope that goes up the side there of the, the rock outcrop. The previous development as well, because of the, the natural slope that's there, just for clarification, so people know that there is, the required off-site parking is on an adjacent property. So the property line is actually right here, and this particular residence's garage is on another property here. It has easements and improvements that's allowed by this, the other property owner. The project will basically do the entryway at the same general location, as well as the same general location of the building pad for the new home.
Before you go any further, would the, going back to that last picture, would the new garage or entryway be at the same forward position as the garage there next door?
Good, good question. There's no proposed changes to the existing garage there. The only change is, is to the, the house to the left there. That would be demo. That will be demoed with a new home, but the garage will stay as is.
Right, but the new entryway, where's that in regard to the...
Yeah, I will...let me skip right here real quick. The proposal, you'll see in the red right here, this is where the setback line is. And so this is the proposal for the entryway, for the staircase. They come in here and they have to go back up another level, then they go straight to the house.
So that, to start...that garage that's showing on the right isn't actually part of this residence, it's part of the next-door residence?
It's on the property of the adjacent residence, but it is part of this particular approved off-site parking. But there's no change to it. Because of the slope that's there, they did an agreement with the adjacent property owner. So for us to meet current code two, it is required that they have that off-site parking. But that is an agreement with the Nobles next door.
And that's a recorded agreement that...okay.
That is correct.
Let me see, that garage is already received a variance, so it's not...
Correct. It's not being reviewed as part of this project, correct.
Okay, and it's not a problem in terms of encroachment into the...
No, those issues are being...obviously, they've been resolved in the past, and part of that...you'll see part of the conditions. Two, we take that into effect, just clarifying anything as well. It's very clear for future times when it comes, any projects come before us, that staff reviews the previous conditions that you would approve if you do. Let me go back just another step. There we go. But this is the map setback, is the 20 feet right here, and this is the proposed addition in the residence here. It meets all current code development standards, the size, the height. And with that, county staff is recommending to the planning commission to approve for a five-foot setback for the entryway and a two-and-a-half-foot to the eve. And with that, if there's any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, and the...this covered...it can't be enclosed, or can it? Enclosed, I mean on the sides. Is it just a roof type, or has it got sides on it?
It has...whoops, let me go back here one more, it's not working. The...yeah, I guess the battery might be going out. There we go. This is the proposed map modification portion. It is enclosed. The existing staircase is unenclosed, that's right at this location, but this will be entirely enclosed. Here's another good view of it right here as well. But the entryway is right here, it'd be only for pedestrian, and then you would be able to go up the staircase, as mentioned earlier, then it goes directly to the residence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And the applicant is here, if there's any further questions for him as well.
More questions for staff? Not right now, okay. Sir, if you'd be so kind.
I'm Don Folda from Ward Young Architects, I'm representing the project. Alan did a good job of basically giving the intro on this. The entry is enclosed, but it's not...there's no living space associated with it. You know, it's the minimum, literally the minimum we have or the minimum we need to get the stairs to go, to cover the grade to get up. Basically, the owners wanted to build a new house. The stairs that are there now, in the location of this enclosed entry, are subject to being buried by snow in some years, 10 to 15 feet or more, basically preventing access to the house. So what we did is, in the process of developing the design for the new house, we wanted to give them better access, and the covered entry, enclosed entry, basically connects the location of the house to the location of the existing garage. It's the only...not only is it the only place you can really build on the site, it's the most logical place to put the entry because it's right between the existing garage, which will remain, and the new house, which is built where the existing house is.
Is there any connection between the existing garage and the entryway?
No, there can't be. There's two five-foot PUEs coming down through there.
That's somebody else's property, basically.
Well, it is somebody else's property, and the easement for that garage does not include being able to build closer or over the property line.
Okay.
So, plus there are two public utility easements and a sewer line running down through there that is not possible.
But there's no covered walkway or anything?
Abandonment. We've been working with DPW and John Weber and working out the whole easement abandonment issue on this. So no, there was no...there is no connection, there will not be a connection.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you then.
Thank you.
Closing off and bringing it back. Do we hear a motion?
Well, I would make a motion that we approve the subdivision modification and variance to allow for a five-foot front setback, two-and-a-half feet to the eve, measured from the property line, in order to permit construction of a covered entryway, subject to the following findings and detached recommended conditions of approval and the sequent findings as attached.
Second? Having a motion in second? We're bringing it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go build. All right, moving right along. We've...the 11 o'clock item has been continued, we're looking at...actually withdrawn.
Tuma Residence, I believe, has been withdrawn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Paul Thompson, planning. We have received correspondence from the applicant for the residence withdrawing their request for the variance, as well as the appellant has also withdrawn the appeal. So we would recommend that the planning commission accept the withdrawal of the application and the appeal and consider this request. Yeah.
So, do we need a vote on that?
No.
I would go ahead and take a vote to accept the withdrawals.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we...
I said, I said.
Motion in a second, a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carries.
And then, I believe we'll break for lunch?
Okay, and at this point, just maybe one other...
12:30.
Yeah, for the afternoon, here's what we're proposing. We've had a request from the 12:30 item, that's the Rock Creek Plaza use permit. It looks like they're going to be redesigning their project, so we have to go back and modify the environmental document to allow for that. So they are not going to be able to go forward. So given that, we would request the commission consider canceling the afternoon items, and that would be the Rock Creek Plaza and the targeted general plan amendment update. So with that, we would go ahead and close the public hearing at this point, and we will re-notice those items when they're ready to go forward. Probably the targeted update for the general plan will be on the 11th. I'm not sure if...we may even have the Rock Creek Plaza item on the 11th as well. So we'll make sure and be available at the front doors here to let people know that the afternoon items have been canceled. We've also notified the folks at Rock Creek Plaza, so they won't be showing up as well.
So the Eland would be on the 11th then too? We continue that one on the 11th?
Yes, that's correct, so we'll have...
So I would move that we go ahead and cancel the F9 news items.
Second? Moved and seconded, vote all in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed?
I have a question of staff though, before you adjourn them, before you hit that gavel again. Don't hit so hard next time, my poor ear is...no, I'm just kidding. Should we...then we should keep our general plan with...and the staff recommendation? How about the rest of it, like the Eland and...
I would...that one I would not worry about keeping that, because there'll be a revised staff report and a revised addendum to the NAGDEC.
I also just have one general question on the general plan. I noticed in there that we're going to be doing a complete general plan amendment or review in next year for the last couple of years. I assume that we're doing all this red stuff here on this one here and changes because of legal requirements to get all this stuff into the general plan now, rather than wait another year, a few years, a couple of years?
There's...
I guess that was going to be my question when...if we had this thing, just a general question.
Yeah, this is a targeted update, we're just updating language, we're updating information that was already adopted by the board, like the amendments that we had to do for the plaster vineyard specific plan and the regional university, the Highway 65 bypass where...those have already been adopted by the board, we're just merely putting that information into the actual document, as well as updating language on policies. For example, the Department of Fish and Game has changed their name to the Department of Fish and Wildlife.
A lot of these things...I noticed a lot of these things were just changed names, but I was wondering why we needed to do it now rather than wait for a couple of years? Do we do this periodically? I mean, this kind of a change of, you know, just updating the information in a plan like this, or has it been touched since it was adopted, what, '94, whatever?
Well, we...like I've indicated, we have done amendments to the Plaster County general plan, we just haven't physically inserted them into the documents. So we do amendments from time to time, and this was just a chance to put that all together and get one.
Okay, get it behind us, okay.
Just to make it more of a usable document, if it's clear.
Yeah, exactly.
Now may I gavel?
You can do whatever you want now, I'm not going to...I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
In that case, the April 28th planning commission, hearing this adjourned.
I got it.